On this Tuesday, January the 21st, 2020. And I welcome all of our council members, excuse one. Councilmember Williams is doing some family duties this evening, so he will not be with us. And we appreciate the staff being here with us this evening, and also those who have joined us in our audience. Welcome to our meeting this evening. We'd like to call, start our meeting by having a pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Bullock, and after which Director Wilkins will give us our opening remarks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear kind and involved, we are grateful for this evening. We are grateful for this opportunity to meet these officials and to be able to discuss the matter to this wonderful city that we live in. And if we discuss these matters, please help us to be civil and come up with the best solutions for this city. And we're grateful for all of the people that serve on the safety behalf and all the employees in this area. Ask me very briefly, can you?
Amen.
Thanks, Tyler and Brent. Now, ask for a motion for approval of tonight's meeting agenda. I don't think there's any...
No changes.
No changes? So I ask for that motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Anderson, a second by Councilmember Lamone. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll now move on to our item number six, our consent items. A, B, C, D, and E is listed in our agenda, and I ask for a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve tonight's consent items.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now move to our next item, which is item number eight, our present... Yes.
Skip the open session?
Oh, yeah, we went right by that, didn't we? So, excuse me, thank you.
That is, that was my job. Fail. My bad.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just totally blew that off. We will now have an open session for those who would like to come forward and address the council. If those would like to, and we would like, we allow you three minutes to talk to us on whatever item you have, and so please come forward.
I will try my best to be truthful with you guys. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Congress, thank you, Kathy, very much. It's not my fault.
Button? How about that?
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
And we weren't blowing you off, okay? I just, sometimes I just want to keep going here, so anyway, so I'm sorry.
In a moment, you might start randomly laughing because of the irony of what I'm about to talk about.
Okay.
And you are free to do so. Alright, I'm here to talk to you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Oh, my name?
What was your name?
Yeah. My name is David Rupert, and my wife Molly is here in the audience with me as well. I want to talk with you, or inquire from you, about city operations, kind of administrative things generally. Specifically, I want to get to political decisions versus administrative decisions, and where the boundary in those lie. Just to give you some background, during the months of October and November, we were putting in building permits, trying to build a home in the very north end, you know, like up north of the Manila Pond. I am the boundary with Cedar Hills. It didn't go well. A letter came back talking about some changes that we need to be made. They didn't make a lot of sense to me, so I came down to speak to Mr. Cardenas. That was a very informative discussion, it went well. Save you all the details, because I'm being brief, but I found out two important things. Towards the very end, I said, "What if we just joined Cedar Hills?" And he's like, "Everything I just said, use it." Like, "That's a political thing, it's not even an administrative thing." Total, like, different conversation. The other important thing was, he said, "I found out that I needed to speak with Mr. Beaumont." We immediately did, and we spoke with Mr. Beaumont. That went interesting. Again, I talked about, "Well, maybe the best thing for us to do is move to Cedar Hills." He's again said, "You're welcome to do that, but that is a political thing, not an administrative thing." So, we went and talked to the main office. We found out there were some items that we needed to be submitted to you, such as the plat map and descriptions of the property, along with paying a $635 item. In all three of these cases, I was told that I would be able to come here and speak with you about what is happening. In December, they said, "Hey, it's not very quick of a thing that Mr. Beaumont and Mr. Cardenas," and I believe the city attorney as well, sorry, I don't know you as well, Christine, "need to submit information to you." That sounds reasonable and fair. After the holidays, I was told, "Hey, it's just too soon." This was our earliest date, and we were assured that we were put on the agenda for tonight's meeting. We've been preparing a lot. I apologize.
Okay.
The very last preparation, as I left for work, is I said, "Molly, please find out what kind of connection will be at that podium. I will come with every connection, but I want to make sure I have the right one." And about an hour and a half later, I got a call from my wife in tears. May I have one more minute?
You bet.
Unable to breathe or speak, because our life has been on hold for so many months. She had been, she had found out that we were taken off the agenda. That was the first time we'd have found out about it. No one had said a word to us. She ended up being transferred to the city attorney. I don't know the bulk of that conversation, but I know the short of it was, we were told we were not allowed to come here and speak. Needless to say, we weren't happy. I'm trying to put my emotion aside, but I want to ask you, Mr. Mayor, and the council as well. Is annexation a political decision, or is it purely an administrative one? Because I've been told by everyone at this city that we would have a chance to speak with you, because it was a political thing, and the political officers would make that decision. I'd like an answer to that.
Okay, we will not answer that right now, but what I would like you to do, and I apologize if we conveyed a thing that you were gonna, that you thought that you were gonna be on the agenda this evening, and it went between the cracks. And you have that opportunity to be added onto agenda at our next meeting, if you so desire. But what I'd really like you to do is come back down and meet with our staff, our city manager, and our legal counsel, and we think we probably have a solution. They've briefed me on what's going on up there, on your annexation, de-annexation, on your building permit. I think we have some solutions. If that doesn't work well with you, then we'll put you on the agenda, and you can come back to the council and bring it towards the council, and the council can decide from that point. But we cannot do that this evening, because it was never got posted that you'd be on the agenda. Okay?
I appreciate that. As you can tell, we do like following the rules. We like reciprocity in that.
I think we, I think we have a solution for you, but let's come back.
I hope you have a solution. I'll be happy to meet with them again.
Okay.
I'll be more than happy. Would you two like me to meet with you jointly, or would you like to meet separately?
Well, I'd like to be involved in the conversation, too. As soon as we're done here, I'll walk out with you, and we'll get something set up. Sorry.
Mr. Daring?
I'm the city administrator here, yeah.
That's who you'd like me to meet with?
So, what we'll do is, we'll, hopefully, we can get it figured out administratively, but it is a city council action to actually have the boundary adjustment take place. If we cannot agree between administrative and you in regards to what's happening, you still have the right to be on the agenda to make your case to the city council.
So is that a guarantee that I'm on the agenda unless we notify you that we don't need to be?
Well, I mean, we just, I don't know if there's public hearing requirements or anything that comes with that.
So, for a mutual boundary adjustment, we have to establish, the council has to adopt a resolution declaring its intent to adjust the boundaries. They have to set a public hearing, and the public hearing has a certain waiting period before you can have it, to allow people to protest. So it's not a come-to-one city council meeting and have it be completed.
I'm not asking for it to be complete, I'm just asking for surety, because I was already guaranteed tonight, and it fell through. I'm trying not to point fingers, I'm just looking for surety.
Do you want to be on the agenda so you can just come and explain the situation? Is that what you're looking for?
I, my experience thus far, in all due respect, is that administrators aren't exactly human-speaking sometimes. Like, there's some really obvious things, and I just don't know how to say it kindly, other than the fact that I would really appreciate the opportunity to speak with you five, but I would absolutely do anything you ask me to do, Mr. Mayor, meeting with them, I'll be more than happy to.
If you do that, because that way, we're working within the code, and that's what we need to do.
I agree with that.
Okay, thank you.
And that's an important principle, in case we're speaking next week, next couple weeks.
Two weeks, two weeks.
Alright.
Thank you.
Is there anything else, anyone else who'd like to come forward this time and address the council? If not, we will close our open session, and now move on to item number eight. I think it was because there were so many smiling faces down there on the, on our left-hand side there, and we now have the Pleasant Grove royalty, please come forward, Ms. Pleasant Grove. We're glad you've joined us this evening, and...
So grateful to be here, I'm so excited.
So...
Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to be here. I look up to each one of you as leaders in our community, and I'm grateful to live in this city where kindness is a priority, and I see that through the Choose Kindness Initiative and everything that you're doing. And it goes right alongside my platform, which is called the Ripple Effect, which is kindness and hope, both online and offline. I was super involved in high school, I was on the drill team, student council, hope squad, and I was a student, a Sterling Scholar for Dance, and I love to be involved. Through my years, I've found how, I've learned something that has impacted my life forever. I've learned that it's not hard to find people who are struggling, it's not hard to find people who are having bad days, because every single one of us has had a hard day, and every single one of us needs kindness. Small acts of kindness make the biggest difference. One day, when I was walking out of the high school, trying to get to work on time, there was a young boy sitting on the side of the road who I'd previously met at a student council lunchtime activity, and he asked me for a ride home from school. I knew that if I said yes, that I was going to be late to work, but I knew that if I said no, then he would be walking home from school that day all alone, in the snow, with just a really light jacket on. So I said, "Yes, of course, jump in my car." He got in my car, and as we started to drive home, he began to tell me his story. His life story was one filled with loneliness, one filled with hopelessness and sadness. He told me that after school, he would often stay and hang out with the teachers, because he didn't want to go home, because he knew that when he went home, he would be all alone. He would be all alone, all day, until his dad got home from work late at night, said goodnight, and then the next day, the same thing would happen, day after day. A lifetime filled with loneliness. We pulled up to his house, and I stopped my car, and I looked at him in his eyes, and I tried to understand. He thanked me for the ride home, and thanked me for being a friend. He said, "I've never had a friend before at the high school." He said, "This is my first year, I'm a sophomore, and I've never had a friend yet." I was so grateful. He got out of my car, and right before he shut the door, he poked his head back in, and he said, "Brooke, thank you for taking the time to listen." He said, "Nobody has ever taken the time to listen to me besides my dad and my dog." And then he shut the door, and he ran inside, and as I began to drive away, my eyes filled with tears, as I realized something important that will impact my life forever. The smallest act of kindness makes the biggest difference. Another opportunity I had this summer was going to concert in the park, one of my favorite parts of the summer. I was able to meet a special-needs girl in a wheelchair, and I got to learn her name, learn her story, and talk to her family. She wasn't able to communicate with words, but she loved music. We connected with that. She loved music, and she danced and wiggled around to it, and I remembered her name and her story. Then a few weeks later, I was at a mission call opening, when I received a phone call. It was my pageant director. She called me, telling me that my friend, this girl that I had met at the concert in the park, was in the hospital, and she was in critical condition. I was asked to go, and I was asked if I wanted to go and visit her, and I said, "Yes, of course." And I quickly drove to the, to the hospital, and as I walked in, I saw my friend laying on the bed. She was in critical condition, indeed, and her mom stood up and hugged me, and I was able to hold my friend's hand, and we sang songs to her. We sang to her, and as an hour or so passed, I stood up and I hugged them both, and I gave the young girl a tiara, and then I went home. Later that night, her mom texted me and told me that my friend had passed away, with the tiara on her head. How grateful I was, I had the opportunity to slow down, to look into her eyes and to be kind. How grateful I was to have kindness, because kindness brings hope. We all have been through dark times, and we can navigate through those dark times with just a sliver of light. A sliver of light comes from hope, and kindness brings hope. I want to propose a month of kindness in Pleasant Grove. One where we will focus on an initiative of kindness each and every day, and our community can be involved in every step. There will be an initiative, which I, there's all different things, and I brought you a list, but it's as simple as giving someone a hug, texting an old friend, thanking somebody, writing a note to a teacher. I am going to do a workshop for young girls, teaching them kindness as we do a service project, and also teaching them how to be kind to themselves, because that is just as important. I will be working with the kindness clubs and hope squads in the elementary schools, junior highs, and high schools, as we work together to be kind in our community. At the end of the month, there will be a service project for the entire community to be involved. We will be tying blankets for Children's Miracle Network hospitals, as well as making lunches for refugees and homeless people. I'm super excited about this. I'm so grateful for each one of you and the kindness that you've shown me, and the kindness, and how important kindness is in our community, because I believe in kindness. I want to end with one of my favorite quotes, that says, "Kindness is one of the most forgotten, yet most wonderful gifts you could give. It heals wounds and brightens days. It brings us together and reminds us that we are more similar than we are different. Sometimes it's easier to be cold and distant, and harder to be warm and vulnerable. Choose kindness anyways. Be an encourager. Be someone who helps others. Give love, have compassion, stay humble. It is the little acts of kindness that make the biggest difference. I know that kindness will unify our city together, and I hope that you will vote for this proclamation to pass. Thank you so much."
Thank you.
I also brought you each kindness tee-shirt to wear. I'll give it to you afterwards.
Okay. Thank you, Brooke. We appreciate all that you do, especially representing our community, and your wonderful smile, and everything you do, and we're excited about this next year, and Strawberry Day is coming up, and that's, and especially this here. Does the council have anything else you'd like to add?
Yeah. So Brooke, wonderful presentation, thank you so much. Choose Kindness PG, like I was telling you, has a new chair, and I'll have her reach out to you, because this, this project you're talking about is what, what we need, is the type of things we're looking for, and so I think they'd be more willing to get behind you and help you, whatever you need.
Thank you.
Okay, alright.
Anybody else?
Excellent, thank you very much, Brooke. It's wonderful, thank you.
I know, you've told the story about giving the boy a ride home before, and I've always remembered that, and then I think you said before, too, how his dog was his best friend. And I've always remembered that story, and I just love how you continue to be his friend, and I think I even, it was in my mind so much, after you shared that several months ago, that I messaged you and said, you know, what happened to him, because I was curious, and it sounds like he had a positive outcome, and is doing well and has friends, and that's because of you, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Lain, before me, I have a proclamation here, and before I can sign it, I need to have a motion from our council.
Okay, Mayor, I'll make the motion. I have to put my reading glasses on though, Brooke, sorry. Mayor, I make a motion for approval of proclamation proclaiming February as Choose Kindness Month, as presented by Ms. PG.
We have a motion by Councilmember Jensen.
I'd second that.
And we, we have a, excuse me. We have a second by Councilmember Bullock. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and I will go ahead and sign this right now.
Yeah.
Can I have these out right now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Bring them up.
She has lots of places to go where she's showering kindness. No, and I hope that all, a bunch of stories just flood social media on really fun acts of kindness. It'll be a lot of fun.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
We're so proud of you.
Thank you.
Are you going to, Brooke? Are you going to post this up there where you want me to? Are you going to be posting this on social media?
Yes.
We'll wait for you to do it instead of the...
Right, yeah, I'll be posting it.
Hey, I'm doing well, it's good to see you.
And that's a great idea.
If you want to put one of these down on Todd's...
Thank you very much.
Where's Todd's chair?
Todd's chair, he's at...
Way down in the end there.
Way, way, way.
We will put it in his box.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Double X.
Thank you very much.
What are my options, what's left? And wait, are they, are they unisex? Okay, then I'm a medium.
Medium what?
Medium?
Medium what?
Unisex.
I didn't know that's really not real. Is that like a hybrid?
Well, it's a man-woman combo.
Very impressive. Fantastic.
So, I'm a medium. Oh, thank you.
A large. We need, we need a couple more of these, because I'd like to give this to our chamber of commerce, too, these.
You're welcome.
Do you have one more, do you have a few more of these?
Yeah.
And we have like two large.
We need a, yeah, get one for Todd.
He's a large.
Large for Todd.
And... So for those on council that, and staff that are on social media, so...
You have a large.
But, once you start getting tagged, just keep sharing, so cool stories of kindness.
Thank you.
Have, let's have all staff, if there's stories, do you have a hashtag?
I do, hashtag the positive ripple effect, but we could, we could create a hashtag for the month of kindness, that would be cool.
Yeah, and then we could hashtag both of them, actually.
And I do hashtag Choose Kindness PG, too.
And Choose Kindness PG.
Okay, I'll create a hashtag and put it on all three of my Instagrams.
Okay.
All three? Ms. PG?
The ripple effect, and then my personal.
Oh, I don't follow that, I can't.
Got you, it's good.
No.
And she's wearing these, all kind of sweatshirts.
I think we're going to wear them to our retreat, our chamber, our council retreat, we're going to wear your shirt, how's that? Right?
Oh, that's a good idea.
Yeah, that'd be cool, I love that idea.
Stop, there you go.
Don't trip.
Thank you so much. Thanks. Thanks, Brooke.
Oh, cute.
Make sure you wear that, Daniel, when you're playing soccer.
Joe, good job.
Oh, look at Daniel.
Oh.
We're setting the tone for tonight, there you go.
Put that under your tie.
Can I get a picture with all of you?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm so excited right now.
We are, too.
Her mom's not here. Of course. It's state, it's drill, like region drill. Of course. You can? Okay, yeah.
I'm still in shirt, but I'm like...
Like, pull it up.
Wait, actually...
Yeah, you look so cute.
Who's going to hold the proclamation?
You are the card.
Oh, I know, okay.
This is in time.
I'll do one, two, three. Over.
Right here, one, two, three. Gotcha. Okay, thank you, everyone. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much. I'm so excited.
We may have to get the mayor on social.
Yeah, he's on social, come on. I am.
What, say what? Hashtag mayor.
Mayor of kindness.
Mayor of kindness. I got so much stuff under there.
Well, that was fun. Okay, now we'll move on to item nine A, our first public hearing for this evening, which is continued, item public hearing to consider for adoption, ordinance 2020-1, amending City Code Section 10-11-D-2, CS-2, in the commercial zone two. Zone permitted and conditional and accessory uses by amending the conditional use, number 1151, townhomes two and three-story with a garage and a maximum of six dwelling units attached per building to allow for a maximum of eight dwellings attached per building with a continued conditional use permit and providing for an effective date. Daniel?
Mayor, council, I think from all of the things we can learn in life, kindness is the one that goes the longest way, right? Helps the muscle. It was, it was hard for me to hold myself when she was telling that story, it was a great story. It's hard to follow up and act like that, huh? And bring to you guys a code amendment. But, it's important as well, so let's talk about this. Mayor, right now in the CS-2 zone, and council, in the CS-2 zone, we have permitted uses and conditional uses. One of the conditional uses for this zone, it's the construction of townhomes up to six units attached per building, okay? It's a conditional use, and according to our code, the maximum number of dwelling units that you can put attached in one building is six. The proposal from the applicant is to change that, to go from six attached units to eight attached units per building. This is in the CS-2 zone, and I put these two areas in red, because we have a couple developments that will go in those areas, okay? So this code amendment affects directly those areas in red, which are located in the CS-2 zone. Our code also says that one of the things that, when we have many units, more than six, it's preferable, from, from our perspective, and what our code says, to go into the big house style. The style is called big house, it kind of looks like a single dwelling with different entrances, and kind of like you create one single mass, again, different entrances. What the applicant is proposing is to keep them on a linear pattern, okay? I, staff did a couple of, you know, field trips, just to figure out how this will work out, and for example, there's some different ideas of how different cities, or even different designers can put eight units into one building. Here's an interesting idea. If you guys realize that, that building right here has eight units, five on one side, three on the other one, okay? So that's one way to do them. There's multiple ways to do it. Here's kind of how it looks when you have in a, in a linear pattern, okay? You end up with buildings like this. In this case, the applicant only has six, one, two, three, four, five, six, so what the applicant is proposing is to increase that from six to eight.
What, say what? Hashtag mayor?
Mayor of kindness.
Mayor of kindness. I've got so much stuff under there.
Well, that was fun. Okay, now we'll move on to item nine A. Our first public hearing for this evening, which is continued, item public hearing to consider for adoption ordinance 2020-1, amending city code section 10-11-D-2, CS-2, in the commercial zone two. Zone permitted and conditional and accessory uses by amending the conditional use number 1151, townhomes two and three story with a garage and a maximum of six dwelling units attached per building to allow for a maximum of eight dwellings attached per building with a continued conditional use permit and providing for an effective date. Daniel?
Mayor, council. I think from all of the things we can learn in life, kindness is the one that goes the longest way, right? Helps the most. So it was, it was hard for me to hold myself when she was telling that story. It was a great story. It's hard to follow up and act like that, huh? And bring to you guys a code amendment. But it's important as well. So let's talk about this. Mayor, right now in the CS2 zone, and council, in the CS2 zone, we have permitted uses and conditional uses. One of the conditional uses for this zone, it's the construction of townhomes up to six units attached per building. Okay? It's a conditional use, and according to our code, the maximum number of dwelling units that you can put, attach in one building is six. The proposal from the applicant is to change that to go from six attached units to eight attached units per building. This is in the CS2 zone. And I put these two areas in red because we have a couple developments that will go on those areas. Okay? So this code amendment affects directly those areas in red, which are located in the CS2 zone. Our code also says that one of the things that when we have many units, more than six, it's preferable from, from our perspective and what our code says to go into the big house style. The style is called big house. It kind of looks like a single dwelling with different entrances and kind of like you create one single mass, again, different entrances. What the applicant is proposing is to keep them on a linear pattern. Okay? I, staff did a couple of, you know, field trips just to figure out how this will work out. And for example, there's some different ideas of how different cities or even different designers can put eight units into one building. Here's an interesting idea. If you guys realize that that building right here has eight units, five on one side, three on the other one. Okay? So that's one way to do them. There's multiple ways to do it. Here's kind of how it looks when you have in a, in a linear pattern. Okay? You end up with buildings like this. In this case, the applicant only has six, one, two, three, four, five, six. So what the applicant is proposing is to increase that from six to eight. Okay? One, this is an item that was continued from last meeting. Okay? Last meeting, one situation that we, no, that staff brought up to you guys was the creation of a viable, usable front yard. Okay? So when we have a row of units that are rear loaded, which is, which are pretty popular now. We have a lot of units that are getting, that are being rear loaded, meaning that you have your own kind of like private road that goes to your garage, and you don't have the typical road in, on your front setback, right? Or in your front yard. These, for example, these units right here is a great example of what a rear loaded units are. So this is the public street, goes through here, you go into the development, park your car, here's your garage. But your front door and your front setback is right here. Okay? So staff consider, and it's something that we discussed last meeting, that when you have a property line, a neighboring property line, really close to it, you create a, by nature, when you build linear units, you create a narrow area of a front yard. We can call it maybe an alley. It depends. Right now, or, or code requires only 25 feet of a setback, of a setback. Okay? So we discussed this during last meeting, and one thing, it was continued because the council sent instructions to staff to come up with something to break the mass. And we decided that staggering was the way to do it. By staggering means to have different setbacks for the buildings attached to that building. So move some back and forth. What we end up coming with, it's a, was this language right here. Okay? So again, the proposal is to go from six to eight units. This is the code that we wrote. Okay? For rear loaded buildings where seven or eight dwelling units are attached in a linear pattern and the front setback faces a neighboring property line, the building should present a staggering setbacks with a minimum of 10 feet difference. The dwelling should be arranged such as four interior units have a 10 feet larger setback than the remaining units on both sides. So if it's eight units, you're going to end up with two on each side. If it's seven, you're going to end up with two and one. The setbacks are measured from the outside wall. So symmetry wasn't something that it was looked for staff, but what we were looking was again to create a viable, usable front setback. I, I created a couple of images that may help us a little bit to figure out. This is the, the area where developments may happen in the CS2 zone. Okay? We have two big properties. As we can see, the frontage to an actual public, public street is minimal. Okay? Here, all access, we have it right here on 700, and here is on State Street. That's all the frontage we have. These are kind of like interior surrounded lots. So... This is what our code has right now. Our code says that you can build six units, one, two, three, four, five, six units, 25 feet setback from property line. But if we want, if the, well, the proposal of the applicant is to increase that from six to eight, obviously, the building is going to increase in mass. Okay? It's going to be bigger by 33%. Now, this doesn't mean that we're going to get more units for the entire project. It just means that we're going to get more units in one building. The final density still stays the same. Okay? So that's what our code says, or what our code allows right now. This is interesting. This is going to be kind of like the, the old cartoons when you go to the, there you go. This is how it will look. It's exactly the same image, but this is how it will look when you have three outside units at 25 and two units, well, in this case, will be 35. Okay? You can see that it gives a little bit more amplitude, a little bit of more area. Now, what the code, how the code is written, we will be requiring something like this. Okay? So again, what staff was looking for was to create some sort of front larger, front setback that it looks like and acts like a front setback. Again, this is only for buildings that are close 25 feet from a property line.
Question right here, Daniel, on the square footage, on the, like, what's the difference in the square footage of, like, are you going to make them go taller?
Possible.
Okay.
Possible. So right now, what the...
I know.
Yeah, possible. Right now, with the code...
With the code?
It's up to three stories.
Okay.
Okay. It's on the side, more than going up. So again, we can see, again, that's how, that's exactly what the code is requiring. That's how it looks with two, and we can go back and forth, and just to appreciate a little bit more of what the difference is. Is it? Tell me when you get sick of it. And this is what our code allows right now. I'm going to tell you why staff decide to go or proposes to do this. Okay? Based on some field trips that staff did, we found out that when you have, like in this case, a row of units against a property line at 25 feet, again, you create something that it looks like this. Let me see. It's a narrow path. This is supposed to be the front yard of those units. Okay? Now, by increasing by two more, that just, the length gets, also increases a little bit, giving us as a result, something that looks like, like this. Now, I'm not saying this is good or bad, but what I'm saying is if we increase the setback on some of the units in the middle, okay? We can create something similar to this type of development, which is, and from the perspective and from the view from staff, is more desirable. Okay? Why? Because you can create a little bit of a courtyard right there in the front setback, and it's not just that small. Like this creates some amplitude. People actually see this and use this as their front yard. With rear loaded units, it's complicated to use your front yard if it's not designed as a front yard because you come from your, in your car, in the backyard, right to your garage. Now, the front door of the unit is on the opposite side. Okay? So if we go back to the images that I was just showing you right here, the road, and this is not, again, this is just an idea to, so we can especially see how it looks. The front doors for these units will be right here, against the property line. And the garages will be in the back. That's what staff proposes. We met with the applicant, again, in, in an effort to kind of like work with the applicant and trying to meet on the middle. This requirement for this type of unit will only be applied, only be applied to buildings kind of pinching between, or a small setback against a neighboring property line. In some cases, if this building was pushed toward the middle, and they have a big area, a park or something like that, that definitely, that, that looks like a front yard, right? I mean, there's amplitude, there's openness. So that's what staff is proposing. Again, we have some meetings with the applicant, and based on that, that's how we wrote that code. Again, this is how it looks with, with three buildings on the outside. You still create a little bit of it. Now, why we don't we, why doesn't the staff go with the zigzag? Like one at 25, one at 35, one at 25, one at 35? Because then it cuts off the intent of having an open area right there on the front setback. So that's what I have, mayor, and council. I don't know if you guys have any questions?
Well, I do, mayor. Is it okay? So I, the reason I brought the zigzag thing is right because, because I live by, right, some townhomes right there, and it's, it's more of the straight, and I, I kind of watch how they interact, right? Their porches all walk out and they all, it's, they're all there, right? They're just, they all share the same, and you probably walk by it every day or drive by it every day. The reason I was saying zigzag is it kind of creates their own little area. I mean, this, I think it probably benefit the two middle ones because that kind of almost becomes their little courtyard, not necessarily the people on the end. They, they come in and go out of their own little individual thing. That's why I was saying the zigzag creates a little more of a, a difference there, but it's nickels and dimes, I guess. I don't know, but...
It would be four units, not two.
Well, I'm just saying either, either way, whoever the units are in the middle, it becomes really just theirs, not, and...
I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Two, it's not two.
Now, these are, these are rental units, right? They won't be, they won't be fencing their area. This is open area, common space for everybody. This, the, this picture that is right here, and, and you see if you guys can see it, that picture is from someone standing up, kind of like right there. Okay? So we can see in this situation, and from all the, the, the sites that staff visited, we found this, a situation where I think they did good with what they have. Again, it's facing a, this is a single family dwelling, property line goes right there, same with these units. And we can see how it's the outside units that are poking out and the inside that create that area that only, I'm pretty sure that all the neighbors go into there and they use that. Same with this one right here. And again, it creates an amplitude. Now, is this, this is a totally, the words keep out of my head. When it's based on, on how you perceive beauty, aesthetics. This is aesthetics. Okay? This is aesthetics. And again, from staff, the aesthetics of that image, it, it is favorable over that one. Okay? So that's what we have.
Anything else for Daniel?
So...
Yes, go ahead.
So one more thing just to finalize. So staff, again, is proposing to go from six to eight, but on, with those conditions.
And planning commission has not seen the conditions they didn't need to, or...
No, when it came to the planning commission, the planning commission voted four to three in favor of just doing eight in a row. And three wanted to see more conditions. However, four was majority, so that's how we brought up to you guys to see, to see, council. Okay?
Now, Joe, do you want to address, talk to us at all, or briefly? Before we open up our...
With your kindness shirt, looking good.
Yeah, since you got your kindness shirt, we'll, we'll show you some kindness.
Thank you. I have, I have a little bit of a different opinion. I'm not sure, my, my goal is to get a vote. I, I can live with this. But as a professional designer and professional in the industry, I have a little bit of a different opinion. I don't know if it's, if you're interested in hearing it. I don't, I don't want to go down the road and then get pushed back to staff or get pushed back to planning commission. I'd rather just vote on this and move forward, unless you're open to hearing.
Mayor, I, I'd like to hear, just to give us your tidbit on it, right? Tell us.
Can I borrow the computer again? I do, I do have to thank Daniel. I mean, he's, his, his concept and his idea here is sound. I think our interpretation is just a little bit different, but again, as always, he's been great to work with, and same with your staff, so I appreciate that.
He froze.
Seeing how we're super crowded tonight.
It's nice. Remember how it used to not be like that?
And I'll try to keep it quick as well.
So, Joe, while you're setting this up, have you built, you've built this, what Daniel was presenting?
Yeah, this is all my product. Everything you're seeing here is mine.
So you've done the little courtyard thing, and, okay.
Yep. I've done, you know, different cities have different requirements, so we have to kind of ebb and flow with our, with our product. And, you know, there's definite, definitely what, something that we prefer based on what our residents and homeowners experience, and we see how they live. This is going to be, both Fossil Cove and this new one that we're proposing this for, Village Square, which is the other side of Smiths, we're going to hold long term. So it, it matters to us a great deal how, how it functions in addition to the aesthetics. So... So I'll, I'll go real quick here. If it will load. So i- in the last meeting, I, I understood the, the concern more so on, on the articulation of the buildings. You know, having them be staggered or zigzag, as Eric mentioned. Here, here's an example of the project that I'm proposing. I laid out the, the buildings as Daniel's presenting where these four units in the middle are all on a flat plane. The buildings that I'm proposing here have a little bit more articulation. They zigzag a little bit more. So there is going to be less of a, of an overall courtyard feel, but in my experience, kind of like Eric brought up, you know, there's a little bit more privacy in between the units, and there's a little cove here and a little cove there. You can see side by side. This, you know, this is an example of, of the unit that Daniel's kind of talking about. And this is what I'm proposing that all the buildings be, look like, here and here. And in this project, the, there's three buildings that would be affected if, if we go to requiring four be on the same plane. It'd be this one here, this one here, and this one here as, as the staff has written the, the code amendment. So here's a quick comparison from what we presented last time. I, I had my engineer do some 3D renderings. This is what the courtyard would look like if, again, if four are on the same plane, right here. Notice that my sidewalk doesn't change, but these little, these little grass areas here get a little bit larger. So we really don't get a big courtyard feel. It does, you get, it does get a little more open. It's nice. This is the way we are going to propose. Oh, so you can see here how the, how this building will look right here. Right here. It's, I wish my gal would have flipped it. I should have noticed that before, but... And this is how we're, we're proposing it. So there's a little bit more articulation. You have, you know, these little pockets are a little bit smaller, but those, those little patches of grass really, in our experience, aren't that usable, you can see. It's just kind of a little patch. We got to go mow it, and then you've got a really flat plain here. It, functionally, it's not bad, but this is what we prefer. It's a little bit, little more articulation. Feels a little bit higher end. You still have a little cove here. We, we are meeting the requirement of 10 feet setback as, as proposed by staff along here.
Excuse me, Joe. Is there some reason why you show this with, not with a flat roof?
This is not the flat roof version.
This not?
I, I have one with the flat roof version as well. I'll show you both if you'd like.
Yeah.
Okay. But this, this is a product that, that I've showed all my photos of. I've never built the flat roof version. I still am yet undecided which version I'm going to build on the southeast side of Smiths. But that's a good question, Brent. So here, here it is again with, with the, the back four units being on the same plane, and then only the ends pop out. This is what it looked like in actuality. You can see here. And the next one is going to be as I would prefer. And it really, at the, at the end, it doesn't really make it that big of a difference. I'll build it either way you want. But again, we still have a little cove here. We're going to have a little cove over there, a little bit more articulation. You can see the building layout there. I think it's more of a, an, an opinion. I, I'm happy to build it either way you want. Again, here's another view where we've got four flat on the inside. And again, my, my opinion is just, it's just, all these people come out and they see each other. There's not much intimacy and privacy, and you kind of want to give a girl a kiss on the doorstep when, you know, have everyone staring at you, you know? So same thing here. Here's, here's a little cove in here, and there's going to be a little cove over there. And this is how that looks. Here's the flat roof, Commissioner Bullock. This is what it will look like if I do my flat roof concept. This is the, the four units that will be flat against that wall. And this is what it'll look like if we have the little coves. So a little notch here, little notch there. So I, I think that's it. I mean, here's, here, I just drew up, you know, there's, there's different ways to lay out buildings. I currently am not proposing any seven plex buildings. My old layout did. My new layout only has, I think, four, six, and eight uni, eight plex units. So this really isn't applicable to me right now, but these are different ways we could lay it out. More articulation, less monotony in a perimeter. The other interesting thing is the whole reason I'm seeking to do this is to have eight plexes so I can build more three bedroom units. What this does is it forces me to build more two bedroom units, doubles my two bedroom units on these select buildings. So it's going to push me to do more two bedrooms. What, my whole purpose of doing this is I could do more bigger three and four bedroom units to attract families. This is just a few examples of my product. This, this is with a 10-foot pop out. This is with three units in, in a line. If we added a fourth, you saw it's a lot in, in the same line. That's why we'd rather have that, that, that separate pop out. Here's another example here where there, where there's three in a row, and then it pops out. Imagine being, there being a fourth one. I think you've probably seen enough. I mean, I can show you more pictures if you'd like, but I don't want to...
I think we're...
I don't want to keep running.
Yeah, well, I think we're good for tonight.
I do have, so this, this is a, a way that the, the layout that I showed, we have three in the middle, then pop in here, pop in there, and then two on the end. That's a seven plex. But let me show you the, the text. I'll, I'll skip past all these and show you the text that I was proposing.
So those were... So those were, uh, occupied units that you were showing us?
Yeah.
Where's the skateboards and the bikes scattered around the lawn and stuff? Must've cleaned them up before you took the-
We cleaned them up. Actually, my gal went, took those today. It was winter, it's kinda gloomy out. So this is what, how we propose, very similar, but for rear-load, load, for rear-loaded buildings where seven or eight dwelling units are attached in a linear pattern, buildings shall present staggering setbacks with a minimum of 10-foot difference, which is what Daniel and I came up with, which I, I'm comfortable with that. The units in each building shall be arranged such that no more than three similar units can be adjacent without having at least a 10-foot or larger setback than the neighboring units. The setbacks are measured from the outside wall. So that's just s- some proposed text that we, we'd go with. Um, any other questions?
Nope. Anything for- Thank you.
No problem, thank you.
All right, well, if there's no other questions from the council, we'll now open our public hearing for, for adoption of ordinance 2020-1, and invite anyone in our audience that's out there that we cannot see, to come forward and address the council at this time. I don't see a rush for the podium, so we'll now close our public hearing and bring it back up to the council for any further discussion. If there is none, we will move to what we have as our, uh, ordinance. Uh, it's printed as Daniel outlined, and, uh, ask for a motion, uh, on, on 2020-1. Do I have a motion?
Wow, so quiet. Well, do we wanna have more discussion, or?
We can discuss.
We're waiting for the, the tally here.
So-
We need to have a motion, so we can vote on it.
This is to go from the six to eight, but is this with what you're saying with the, the courtyard-type feel?
The four units that are back.
Correct. Four, keep in mind, this is, again, four units that are really close to a fence, to a neighboring property line. Because it's not the same, we have an open area, and you can see actually, and it's wider than when you are, this is for that narrow type of spaces that we're talking.
Mm-hmm.
But yeah, this is, the language that is there is for the four units in the middle to create that type of a courtyard, yes.
Okay.
And so, and so that's why I asked you, I mean, you, you've done both, right? So, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Mayor, make a motion for adoption of ordinance 2020-1, amending City Code Section 10-11-D-2, CS2 Commercial Cells Two Zone permitted conditional and accessory uses by amending the conditional use. 1151 Town Homes, two or three stories with a garage. Maximum of six dwelling units attached per billing to allow a maximum of eight dwellings attached per billing with a conditional use permit, and providing for an effective date.
We have a motion by Councilmember Jensen. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Councilmember Anderson, and this will be a roll-call vote. And, uh, we will start out with the Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bullock.
No.
Councilmember Jensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamone.
Yes.
Councilman, uh, Councilmember Williams is not here. So it, the tally is three to one. So motion passes. Thank you. We'll now move on to-
Okay, I just say, it, it's, that ground is set like that for, well, forever, right? I mean, it's just exciting to see some stuff, some, some development going in. It'll be good for that area, and-
Yeah, it's gonna be a good thing for Smiths.
We'll turn the time over for, to our city administrator for our next public hearing.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Kindness.
Uh, what you have before you is a proposal to make a change to the, uh, per-can charge monthly for our recycle can. Uh, just in brief, uh, the recycling industry has changed in the last couple of years, mainly due to the country of China, um, really no longer taking any recyclables outside of, uh, from the United States. Uh, that's, it's, uh, there's a bunch of countries that were sending their recyclables to China. Uh, China found that a lot of the recyclables coming in were contaminated. They were things that weren't recyclable. Uh, they found they had a landfill quite a bit of it, and they decided ultimately that they were gonna be done taking recyclables, or at least it had to be really, really clean recyclables. So that's changed the industry here in the United States, which is where most of the product went, most of the commodities, uh, to a point where, um, now they're trying to find out where to take the recyclables. There's some places you can take them in the United States, but not enough infrastructure there to handle all the recyclables. So there's some new plans that are being built and things, but they're, um, still maybe a couple of years away from being able to take, uh, the, the commodities. Uh, so at this point, those that are involved in the industry, um, have had an increase in costs. And so they've now come back to, uh, those that are providing the curbside recycling, and telling us that due to the increased costs, is, cost in the industry, um, that in order for us to keep this a service, that there will be, uh, an increased cost passed on to our residents. We started our recycle program back in 2010. Uh, at the time that we started it, we charged $5.90 per month per can. The recycle can is picked up every other week, so it's not weekly, but every other week. And then it is sent to a recycle, uh, facility. Uh, over the last 10 years, we have not changed our rate. The, uh, industry has been, uh, in a good position to where there wasn't a need for us, uh, to increase the rate. But now with the changes in, in the industry, and these are worldwide, I mean, they, they've affected, there's other countries too, that no longer can send their recyclables to China. Uh, so because of that, uh, this is just a lot bigger than Pleasant Grove. This is really kinda more of a global issue. But it does have an impact, uh, on us. Uh, so, uh, at one point, we used to charge a $50 opt-out fee if somebody, uh, did not wanna be in the program anymore. Uh, we have since changed our ordinance. I wanna say that was about three or four years ago, that, um, you no longer have to pay $50 if you want to opt out of the recycle program. So with this, uh, what's being proposed is a 70 cent per-can increase on the monthly bill to provide the service, to go from $5.90 a month to $6.60 per month. Uh, this is, uh, because of the tenuous nature of the industry, this is, uh, something that we will revisit every year with Republic Services, who, uh, is who we contract out to provide this service for our residents. Uh, just a reminder, the recycling is not mandatory in our city. You're not required to have a recycle can. Uh, so the service will still be available for those in which recycling's a priority. Uh, for those that, uh, would no longer, no longer wanna recycle because of the increased cost. Uh, there are other options available. You could, if you need to, get a second, uh, garbage can, uh, at a, at a little bit more of a cost than what a recycle can costs, although the garbage can is picked up weekly instead of every other week. And I think I cover everything there. So, uh, there, there, there are options. Or you can just do away with the service. Um, and that would, uh, require getting ahold of, um, Scott Wells, who handles our utility billing, and letting him know, uh, that you no longer want that service, um, as a, as a resident, so.
So where has Republic said that the recycling is going now, for what is continued to be recycling, recycled?
So where?
Where, yeah, where is it going now? If China's not taking the bulk?
They take it to, uh, Rocky Mountain Recycle, and then they're the ones who, uh, package it up. And then they're the ones who, in essence, sell the recyclables. So, uh, there's a, well, there's, I mean, different groups do different things. There's numerous, there's plastics, there's cardboard, these, so Republic, or, uh, Rocky Mountain Recycle handles part of that, and there's other places that handle other parts. So what was happening, uh, I mean, Rocky Mountain Recycle is probably a good example. They were getting cardboard, and China was no longer taking cardboard. So the cardboard was just kinda stockpiling, 'cause they had nobody to buy it. Or nobody that was, um, gonna recycle it. Uh, so I, I, I'm not exactly sure what they've done with everything to take care of that, other than, um, there are probably our options for them, it's just it costs more money for them to do that. And that's why they're turning around and telling us, we can't provide this service at this anymore. It's gonna cost that, you know, extra in order to do it.
So is it still actually being recycled, or going to the dump?
Yeah, from what Reese has told us, that those places are still recycling.
Mm-hmm, just at a higher cost?
There might be some instances of where they have gone to a landfill, but, um, a- as I've asked Reese that question, I mean, he said, yes, they are still, um, recycling. Is every bit going? I can't speak as a surety to that, but that is the intent. It is not, uh, the intent is not to collect it as a recyclable, and then just turn around and landfill it. That doesn't make sense. If that's the case, let's just get rid of the program. Uh, there, oh, the other thing I forgot to mention, there are other cities that have, uh, cities are, have been dealing with this really everywhere. Some cities have opted just to do away with the service. Uh, the only one in the state of Utah that I'm aware of is Cedar City. There's an article in the, um, you know, out in the media a couple of weeks ago, that they just decided to discontinue the service. Most cities have turned around and just increased their rates, so that the service still is available to those that wanna use it.
Any other questions for Scott? No, thank you, Scott. We will now open our public hearing for Resolution, excuse me, yeah, Resolution 2020-3. Anyone who would like to come forward and address the council could do so? No? We will now close our public hearing, bring it back up to the council. If there's no further discussion, I'd like to have a, a motion for this resolution.
Mayor, is it just the last part there, is read on our yellow sheet here? I- is it just the very last part, adoption of Resolution 2020? Because there's some, like a statement, and then, then there's actual... I'll read it, I'll make a motion, and if it's wrong, then you can correct me. Mayor, I make a motion for adoption of Resolution 2020-02, adjusting and amending the comprehensive fee schedule for, for fiscal year 2020 budget. Does that work?
We have a motion by Councilmember Jensen. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilmember Bullock. This would be a roll-call vote, and we will start the other direction now with, uh, Councilmember Lamone.
Yes.
Councilmember Jensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Bullock.
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passes. And thank you, and I will bring up, before we go to our next item, those who, uh, Reese's, uh, the mayor is, uh, setting up a tour of Rocky Mountain Recycling next Tuesday, I think 9:30 or 10 o'clock, for anyone who would like to go. So please let me know, and I can give him that number. I'm kind of, was curious, I've never seen the process, and I'd really like to see it so I could tell my wife Paula what she can and cannot recycle. So.
Sid and I did that, and it is, it's a, it's a interesting tour.
Is that?
Yeah. It's, it's actually amazing.
That's amazing.
So, okay. So we'll now move on to our, uh, next item on our, uh, action items, this item, 10A, consider, an item to consider for adoption, Resolution 2020-01, authorizing the mayor to sign an inter-local cooperative agreement between Utah County and Pleasant Grove City for snow removal services on Canyon Road outside of the Pleasant Grove City boundaries, and providing for an effective date. Director.
Mayor, council, uh, this item is before us because of the First East Project. If you remember, when we, um, signed the agreement on First East, that we agreed that we would plow the section in Pleasant Grove, which, which is essentially from State Street to 3300 North, or actually the Murdoch Canal Crossing, 3100 North approximately, is where we've agreed, per our agreement, that we would plow that in lieu of them reconstructing the road. So that was in that original agreement. One of the things that they've come back and asked is, well, you're plowing this, we have another two miles approximately, uh, two to two and a half miles from where that stops to get to the American Fork Canyon, or SR92, which is managed by UDOT. And in the past, UDOT was plowing all of this, and they don't have a lot of facilities that they manage up in this area. So they asked if we would be willing to continue with our plows beyond that canal crossing and go all the way to American Fork Canyon. And this has been happening, that discussion happened a couple of years ago. We went in and tried to determine the cost of, of our guys' equipment, salt, guys' times, fuel cost, those other things, and came up with the cost of, last year, we did 10 storms that we were out plowing for the, for the season, and we estimated that it cost us about $7,000 to do that. And that pays for all of our equipment, time, guys, and salt. And so in our agreement, in this inter-local agreement, it's, um, that they would agree for $7,000, we'll bill them, uh, about this time every year for $7,000, and we will agree to plow that. We did have the contingency in there, that if, if, for some reason, there was a lot more storms, that they would, uh, kinda pay us in kind with salt, or something, and brief salt that we can use on the roads to just make sure that we're covered, if there's something substantially weird year. Last year was a pretty busy year-
Yeah.
-with the snowfall, if you remember, and we had about 10 events that we were out on that road. Usually it's multiple times in a day, so that assumes we're going out twice in a single day. Um, but, uh, anyway, so we felt comfortable with the agreement, that we can do it, and we have been doing it for the last year and a half, so this agreement is $7,000 for last year, and $7,000 going forward this year and future years, um, unless we find that there's a stipulation that we need to change that or modify that for some reason, because of cost.
Does this take away from the plowing happening in Pleasant Grove first?
So it, it does, um, it is a priority road, so it is a major collector road. And so we do, we would be sending a plow out there on that road. Uh, we already do it in Pleasant Grove, and it's a continuation of that. So yes, it is, one of our bigger plows, uh, does it, because it's a more major road. Um, we feel comfortable that we can handle the, the workload to do that with the equipment that we do have, um, without, uh, significant diminished, um, service to Pleasant Grove City. Otherwise, we wouldn't do this, but.
Being the new guy, why isn't Cedar Hills plowing their own road? Good question.
'Cause they didn't sign the agreement that we signed, which is that in 30 years, we'll be taking over this road, and up to that time, then we agreed to plow the road, so that they would do the improvements. And if you look at the improvements that we got in Pleasant Grove versus the improvements that were done in Cedar Hills, there's a significant difference in all the curb gutter, sidewalk widening, all of that that happened.
Range.
And we wouldn't have got that if we didn't sign that agreement either.
So this agreement requires Pleasant Grove after 20 years to, to do the road to the mouth of American Fork Canyon?
No.
Just, just to the boundary?
Our, our agreement right now is just to that, about the canal crossing.
Okay.
But this agreement would allow us to continue to plow to SR92. It's more of a cooperative agreement to help them out, but we're getting compensated. We're not doing it for free on that section, but.
Need to put a toll booth up by the Murdoch Canal.
Yes. Throw in your change as you go by.
Yes. Just only coming into Pleasant Grove. So, and that's 30 years we take over ownership of that piece in Pleasant Grove. And I don't think we'll have to worry about it, Brent. I know I won't. So, it's, well, I'd be ninety-seven, so.
But we also have to, in that agreement, and I think that portion, the improvements that we got, was about, about $6 million worth of improvements that Cedar Hills did not get. But, um, part of that was, is that we will get that road back in 80-plus.
It has to have a certain pavement condition index value, so they have to maintain it during the duration and return it back to us at an acceptable level, so.
So why couldn't UDOT pay Cedar Hills to plow the road? If this is, I mean, is this-
Utah County?
Utah County.
Um, they probably could, but I don't think their relationship was, is such that they would probably do it.
Here's my thing-
And I don't know if Cedar Hills actually has equipment like we do.
No.
They don't have as much equipment, a much smaller crew, much smaller plows. So they, they probably wouldn't be willing, but.
I just don't know if I love the idea of a plow being taken for two miles of a major road away from our residents first, when it seems like there's other resources available. I mean, I understand we're getting compensated, but I think we should be a first priority, and I, with two miles of, I mean, a busy road, it just seems like there's other entities that could be handling that. I don't know. May, maybe a good question would be, what's the timeframe that it takes, uh,
It takes about two hours to do that. It takes about, um, you, you're traveling, and we've kinda looked through everything, right? We've looked at, what is the cost, what is the time for employees, what is the vehicle cost? All of those things are factored into that $7,000 number, but, um- But it takes about two hours for someone to go, because you go both directions twice, because it's a three lane road, to be able to get the entire width of the road. So there's about two hours that is kind of dedicated to doing that, so.
I don't know, I kind of feel they either need to amend the relationship or hire an outside contractor or whatever it is, because we have, you know, 110 miles of road that need to be done and that's first priority to keep our residents safe. I don't know, I just, I don't, I don't love this.
Marty, is that two hours just for the portion through Cedar Hills or that's the whole State Street to?
It's about, it's about an hour and a half to two hours for one guy, one plow, to go and do that whole section for that two and a half miles. You're only going at about 10 miles an hour, 10 to 15 miles an hour. So it takes you about that much time. By the time you get the road cleared, it's right around two hours.
Three passes.
Any other questions for Marty? Okay, thank you. No, I would like a motion for Resolution 2020 dash zero one.
Sorry, I, you know, I, one more, how long have we been already been doing this? I mean?
So we started the year before last, kind of at the end of the season. And then we started the construction project and all through the construction last year, we did it. And, and then this year we've done it so far for the last three or four storms, so.
Question, does Cedar Hills have a salt location where? Because I would not, I would imagine that part of that travel time and that amount of time doing that road is our guy in our truck coming back to our salt, which is either at the pipe plant or at the shop.
So, so true, but, so our salt trucks handle about six tons of salt.
Which does the three passes?
And it's about two and a half tons to do the three passes, so it's only about half the truck.
Got it.
Trucks are plowing out and in, so we're not just going out empty, starting, we're running up the road, we're plowing one direction.
And then going back down.
It wouldn't make sense necessarily to try to get them to fill us up with salt necessarily, because we're going to be in and around doing our city as well as that road as we were doing, as we're doing it, so.
Isn't the public works in Cedar Hills right on the road itself?
Yeah, it is, right on the road and up the road. Like I said, I mean, we're, if, if we want to go that direction, we can encourage the county to go and talk with Cedar Hills. As I've looked at it and talked with our streets department, we feel like we can handle this without a huge diminished value to us. Is there a cost? Yes. There's two hours of time of plowing, you know, a very busy collector street and you have to be there to do that one, just like we do Pleasant Grove Boulevard, First East through Pleasant Grove, 1100 North, all of those streets. Now, we've got eight or nine guys out there running plows on all of those other streets as well and they hit the priority streets. So Sid, it's not a priority street diminishment. It's a, it takes a little bit longer to get to the local streets, right? Because we're now, that's one of the priorities to get done and we, and we would not necessarily not do that to do a local street or a cul-de-sac or something. So it, it would, does take a little bit longer to get through the process and that's why we feel like we fully need to be compensated for that time and effort and work, so.
Why, why just 7,000? Why not 10 or 12? I mean, they ought to pay a premium to have Pleasant Grove City do it as opposed, or, or go negotiate with Cedar Hills.
Sure.
We ought to make, there ought to be money made on this deal.
Right. I feel like we're plenty covered.
Compensated.
This is, this is not bare bones estimating. We threw in there all the costs that we would expect plus some and threw it in there and felt good about it, so.
Just a comment, there's going to come a time where we're going to need the county to help us with something. So I, I think it's good.
And Cedar Hills.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're covering our costs. There, there might be a little bit of an impact on.
Kindness, right. You're, you're preaching kindness.
No, I'm, I'm preaching that there's going to come a time where we're going to need a favor from the county and I don't want them to turn around saying.
But I don't think we operate on.
I'd like to take my comments back.
But I don't think we operate on favors. We operate on priority for our citizens and safety, and this is both of those. They have a public works department right on that road. They can, I think they need to either figure it out or work with the county. This to me like just isn't our issue. Our issue is 110 miles of road in Pleasant Grove, safety comes first and we owe it to our citizens to plow our roads first. If everything, and that's a main road right there.
So I drive that road.
A lot of our residents do go that direction to get.
I go that road every single day.
Well, I mean, that's fine.
But I haven't ever noticed that, so I think the guys go out at, if they get called out, it's what, four o'clock, five o'clock? By seven o'clock, eight o'clock, the, the roads are done. So I think most of the city can be done in a four, five hour shift. But you have a lot of residents that drive that road.
Well, I know, but the roads, that road's getting plowed. It's the roads here in PG that they're taking time away to plow that road that are not getting done here in PG. That road is getting done.
But you have a lot of Pleasant Grove residents.
That's going out that way.
That go on that road.
Well, that's why someone else can do it though. Why do we have to do it and take away from the roads being done here?
But if we can do it more effectively and more cost effectively, it's still a tax, it's still a taxed dollar.
But that's not our issue though. Like, but why can't Cedar Hills and the county figure it out? Why is this our problem to plow their road?
So I have a.
They want us to plow it and we want to do it for them.
I have a legal question, Tina. By us, with this contract, does that make us responsible? Say someone comes back and says, hey, Pleasant Grove, you didn't adequately plow that up towards the mouth of the canyon? And then again, accident, does this contract then put us in danger?
So Marty and I discussed that issue. There is a mutual hold harmless indemnification clause in the agreement. Mostly we would both be relying on the Governmental Immunity Act for that.
That's contract does, try to agree that we are going to follow our standard policies and procedures in how we plow that road. And we would, it's an arterial road and we would treat it as such type of thing in the agreement, so.
And county just, right, I mean.
Really, they're coming to us saying, hey, guys, we, we've got something that's way out there for us. It's tough for us to get our plows there and get a responsiveness. Yes, it's fully their responsibility. They understand that. They're saying, you're right here. They don't feel like they can probably go to Cedar Hills with what's happened on that road. So they're coming to us and saying, are we willing to do that? I'm saying, I feel like we can. I'm not going to do it for free and we're going to do it for a cost and make sure that everything's covered there. But we would be willing to do it if that's the case, because it does benefit our community and it does help this overall working together with, with what we've got, so.
I would imagine as we get further north, we're one, this is one of the last county roads, right? Big, major roads, right? I, I can't, I imagine there's some out in Lehigh that county goes and takes care of, maybe, I don't know.
Out by the lake, I think, or so.
And they're probably contracting, because they're not bringing their plows up here.
It's unique in that there's a county road that's in a municipal city limit. I don't know if they have, this might be their only road that's actually in the city. And that's what they're telling us. Most of their work is down south or maybe far out to the west. So we can't get, they, they said, just to get our plows there, just doesn't make sense. And if I remember when the, the discussion initially happened with Cedar Hills, is they don't have trucks big enough to do it. And that was the reason, I think they initially approached Cedar Hills and they said, we, we, we just don't have trucks big enough.
This was actually in that original conversation.
It was.
We said that we would.
We would do our portion.
Well, we said actually, we actually had a little bit of a conversation about us taking care of that portion as well.
There was a conversation, you're right, and, and this is what's led to this agreement, is us saying, you know, we'll do what we can to help. It is an interlocal agreement. The city council has to agree. If the city council tonight says we're not interested in the interlocal agreement, that's fine. That's the county's problem. Okay, they're, they're going to have to figure that out. I, I just, we go to the county every once in a while for funding, for other things that are not tied whatsoever to snow plowing. And I would hate for the county to come back and say, you didn't help us out here, so why are we going to help you with this? And I'd.
Well, how long was this contract for?
I believe it was a couple of years initially and then extended thereafter if there were any issues. Do you remember the exact on that term?
Is there an end date?
Two or three years.
I, I can see what Sid's saying, is there, it doesn't feel like there's buy-in from Cedar Hills, right? It's like, when, when we went through this whole canyon road thing, they, right, they went the other direction. I know, it's just that, it just feels like, maybe I'm reading into this wrong, that there's just no buy-in from their end saying, we'll, we'll step up to and help. But, but again, I understand, Marty, that you've got your costs covered.
They won with Cedar Hills.
Yeah, they can't.
We have a separate agreement than what they have. We receive the benefit of that money to get the improvements.
For our, our section of the road.
Cedar Hills from, pretty much from the get-go just said, we're, we're not.
Do you see an end date?
So it's 2023.
Oh, 2023. So we could revisit this in 23.
It's not a long term, it's not a 30 year.
2021, 22.
And then you'll continue collecting data so that we, you can go back and see if we're right or wrong on the price.
If we find that there's something that's changed or we're not meeting their needs or it's taking longer or we're creating concerns, we'd definitely be able to bring that back and.
So one last question, Marty. And we'll put this on your shoulders. Do you feel that by us doing this, it affects our city and our roads by us taking on this additional two or three miles worth of road? Have, have you seen it in the, in the past that we, when we have done it, that it's affected? Like, take, take for instance, last year, you said it was our biggest year.
Yeah, last year was difficult because there was all the construction cones and it was just a tore up. But, but our feeling is this, does it take us more time? There's no question. Is it a priority where it rode? There's no question. What it's pushing off on those two hours is the local roads that aren't as highly critical to be done. Are we not getting those roads done? No, we're still getting them done. It might take us an extra half an hour to get there, to get those done. And, and so what we're feeling like, that in the spirit of cooperation and trying to help the county here, and we're being compensated for that, we feel like it's worth that effort in doing this for them and keeping that camaraderie together as far as working together. We still got to get First East done. We still work with them in many different ways. And we feel like that this would be something that'd be worth time. Now, Sid's exactly right. Is it taking away from something that we're doing in the city? Yes, there's no question about that. The question is, is it enough that it's making a big difference in the overall service that we're providing? I don't think it's a significant enough service that we're worrying about. These few hours that we're using, because in the end, other people are kind of covering that and we just, we get the whole city done. And I feel like the level of service is still going to be rather high from everything that we're doing on plowing, so.
Actually, this, you're known for your service, by the way.
Yeah.
The guys do a great job.
Well, is this something we could do an annual contract and review it each year instead of waiting three years?
Well, may I just tell you that Section 5 allows us, I mean, you, we don't have to stay for the whole three years. We can give them 60 days written notice and the, and the contract can be terminated. So if it's something that you don't like, if you feel like the local roads are being, you know, delayed in getting plowed, then we don't have to wait for three years to address it.
Any other questions for Marty? Okay, no questions. I'm still looking for a motion.
So Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize you, the mayor, to sign an interlocal cooperative agreement between Utah County and the Pleasant Grove City for snow removal services on Canyon Road outside of Pleasant Grove City boundaries.
We have a motion by Councilmember Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilmember Bullock. This will be a roll call vote. We'll start out with Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bullock.
Yes.
Councilmember Jensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamone.
No.
That's three to one. Motion passes. Thank you. We'll move on to our next item here. Next item is to consider for adoption Resolution 2020 dash zero three, authorizing the mayor to sign a license agreement with Provo River Water Users Association to allow for installation of filters on turnouts to Pleasant Grove from Alpine Aqueduct on property owned by BRVWA at approximately 1038 East Murdoch Drive, Pleasant Grove, and providing for an effective date. Director.
Mayor, council, with our filter project, when you put a filter on a, an outlet that we have from the, from the Alpine Aqueduct, we have a turnout. And we're putting a filter on that and you need to flush that filter into something that can take some water. Usually it's about 200 gallons of flush or 300 gallons that flushes all the debris off the screen and puts it somewhere that you got to do that. In, in the situation that we have on 1100 North with the turnout, it's kind of really hard to see in this picture, but I believe the turnout is right in this area here. There's really not a good location to discharge that water. And so we're, what we needed to do, we have a piece of property here on the corner of 1100 North and Murdoch Drive. And we needed to get that water back from that turnout diversion. It's about, I think it's a four inch line and it'll just flush and push it back into this. We've got a little clean out and then the water will be cleaned at that point and come into our system. So Provo River Water Users Association manages the right of way there for the Murdoch Canal Trail. And so we have to have this agreement in order to be within the right of way of the trail. Essentially, we'll be digging a small trench for a four inch pipe that will be the flush line from this filter. And this is the agreement that does that, so.
Any other questions? If not, I would like a motion on Resolution 2020 dash zero three.
Mayor, I make a motion for adoption of Resolution 2020 three, authorizing the mayor to sign a license agreement with Provo River Water Users Association, PRWUA, to allow installation of filters on the turnouts to Pleasant Grove from the Alpine Aqueduct on property owned by PRWUA at approximately 1038 East Murdoch Drive, Pleasant Grove, Utah, and providing for effective date.
We have a motion from Councilmember Jensen. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Anderson. This will be a roll call vote again and we'll start with Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bullock.
Yes.
Councilmember Jensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamone.
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll now move on to our next item, which is 10C, to consider for, for adoption of Resolution 2020 dash zero four, adopting the mountain land pre-disaster mitigation plan and providing for an effective date. Director.
The state and in order to fill, fulfill federal and state requirements, they have a pre-disaster mitigation plan that's required by each one of their association governments. So Mountain Land Association is our regional, what's it called? Council, yeah. They're over our area and they are responsible for a pre-disaster mitigation plan. And they adopted one and this actually is back in 2017. And we are responsible to also adopt their plan. And the reason for that is so that we kind of are on the same page with trying to move forward with any mitigation measures that would be, I guess, helpful in the sense of if there was a flood or landslides or other things. What I found is that a lot of these things are typical in our standards. We've already done this as far as trying to meet the standards of the pre-disaster mitigation planning. So we already require that developers submit geotechnical reports. We already have a sensitive lands and hillside ordinance. We already work with fire and things on, on the boundaries of the city. And so a lot of these things are covered, but it's just a matter of having a plan that we've adopted so that if we ever need to apply for funding for pre-disaster mitigation, we can go to the federal government, say, we've adopted this plan, which is put together by our local area government. And, and then we can move forward with actually applying for funding for those disaster opportunities. So that's essentially what, what this is for, is just adopting the plan that's been adopted by MAG and, and all the communities around her are adopting that as well, so.
Any other questions? Marty? If not, I would ask for a motion on Resolution 2020 dash zero four.
I make the motion that we adopt Resolution 2020 dash zero four, adopting, adopting the mountain land pre-disaster mitigation plan and providing for an effective date.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lamone.
Second.
We have a second by Councilmember Jensen. And we'll start out with Councilmember Lamone. Yes?
Sorry.
Mayor, good job you got her.
Councilmember, Councilmember Jensen?
Yes.
Okay, we've got another one. Councilmember Bullock.
Yes.
And Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
I'm so sorry, I just got distracted for a minute.
Okay, we're keeping Marty pretty busy here tonight. Okay, 10D, consider for.
This is a good one.
Consider awarding Cody Eckert Construction the Filters and Diversions Project. Consider awarding Cody Ecker Construction the Filters and Divergence Project bid in the amount of seven hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and authorize the mayor to sign the notice to proceed and to sign the agreement upon receipt approval of final contract, contract documents. Director.
Yeah, we, as you know, we put out the plans for bid right before Christmas and went through that season and got bids back this last week. We had five contractors that provided bids on the project. The engineer's opinion cost was just over one million dollars. The low bid came in at seven hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, as you can see on there. Seven seventy-four, two fifty from Cody Ecker Construction, which is about twenty-three percent lower than our engineer's opinion of cost and about, I think, twenty-seven or so percent lower than the average. So we actually got a wonderful bid, a great bid, you know, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars less than we anticipated, which is, which is great. We've worked with Cody Ecker before and feel like that they'll do a great job and they're raring to go on the project. So we feel comfortable making this award to them for that amount. Now, just to clarify, so on Thursday, goes before the Division of Water Resources for the approval of our bond, which is for this project, as you remember, we were talking about two point five million dollars. We were providing seven hundred thousand of that. They were providing one point eight million dollars with the bond. It's a seventy-two, twenty-eight split on, on that concept. With this new amount, we've reduced the total bond required funding to one point four five five million dollars. So we've dropped it more than a million dollars with what we're going to need to finish this project. There's a couple of things that are causing that. One is that we got a great bid and we've got everything done fairly quickly and we feel very good about that. The other thing is, is originally we discussed about putting some sort of a filter station on the Battle Creek tank system, which is very difficult, and we felt like we can do something different. And so that original two point five million dollars covered an additional filter station and assumed some additional higher costs for construction, which we were able to get a great bid. And so that's, just so you have all of the information, we're awarding this project. Our total budget now is down in the one point five million dollars instead of two point five billion dollars, which is great, which means that we will actually getting a loan that's just over a million dollars, one point, one million fifty thousand or something will be our total loan amount, and then we'll be matching that twenty-eight percent. So it's great news for, for that and we, we're excited to get moving on this and, and get it going. And we've got to have it done in the next three and a half months, so we will be hitting the ground running here next, in the next week or so.
Well done.
Great work. Any other questions? If not, I'd like to have a motion to authorize me to award this bid.
I make the motion that we award Cody Ecker Construction the Filters and Divergence Project bid in the amount of seven hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars and two hundred and fifty cents and authorize the mayor to sign the notice to proceed and to sign the agreement upon receipt and approval of final contract documents.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lamone. Do I have a, is that everything?
It was stated in all.
Sorry, seven hundred and seventy-four, two fifty. Seven hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. I said cents or something.
You did.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry, I threw in cents in there. It was two hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Lamone. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilmember Anderson. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, and we'll move on now to ten E. Which is, consider for adoption Resolution 2020 dash zero-five. Well, we're in the first month and we're already up to Resolution number five. So authorizing the mayor to sign the participation agreement with, for Utah County Officer Involved Critical Incident Protocol and providing for effective date and in place of Chief Roberts. Brett, welcome.
Thank you. Sorry, you, you get the scab tonight, so. And I realize that I'm the only thing standing between you and you guys going home, so I'll make it brief. Essentially, the chiefs of police have gotten together and they've decided to revamp the Officer Involved Critical Incident Protocol team. Essentially, what that includes is if an officer is involved in a shooting or any other critical incident such as a pursuit that might involve serious bodily injury and/or death, some other entity would come in and investigate that in the spirit of transparency and also just to make sure that we are deconflicting and we're not investigating our own in those types of situations. So the, the chiefs have worked hard on this and they've put this new, this new protocol together. And it's, it's improved and it should improve our investigations as well as provide a conflict of interest for the city.
Any other questions?
Yes. Is there a, is there a monetary involvement here? Is this just, okay?
No, this wouldn't. We would, we would, and we, yeah, we always have been sending our personnel to help with investigations as every other agency does for mutual aid and, and.
So something happens in American Fork, you guys get called out, you go.
We go.
What's changed? What, so what, what's changed in this agreement? What?
So essentially, we've just kind of adopted the Salt Lake County model. But the biggest change is probably the Utah County Attorney's Office, the Investigations Unit, has been the spearhead or has been leading those investigations. And the new model puts two commanders to assign to local agencies rather than the county attorney's office to command those and, and direct those investigations.
All right, yeah.
All right.
Anything else? If not, I'm looking for a motion on Resolution 2020 dash zero-five.
Mayor, I make a motion for adoption of 2020 dash five authorizing the mayor to sign the participation agreement for the Utah County Officer Involved Critical Incident Protocol and providing for an effective date.
We have a motion by Councilmember Jensen. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilmember Bullock. And we'll start at the bottom again here at Councilmember Lamone.
Yes.
Councilmember Jensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Bullock.
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Thank you. Passes unanimously. And that concludes all of our action items for this evening. And we would, is there anything we need to discuss, Scott, for our February fourth city council meeting agenda?
Just, we will have our public safety building final construction numbers. As I promised for the last two months, you're actually going to see them in two weeks. Denise has done a good job of putting them together and they look good. So we'll present those to you for you to take a look at. We also have a rezone, a public hearing on a rezone for Steve and Diane West. R one twelve on two point six seven acres on two hundred north and nine fifty east. I don't know, Daniel, if there's anything they need to have a heads up on that or if that one's pretty straightforward.
Ah, pretty straightforward. Pretty simple. It's surrounded by, it's an R one twenty, but it's all surrounded by R one twelve. And all, all of those properties have been continually been the rezone, so.
Okay.
Also, we're hoping to have the bid awarding for the demolition of the homes on Locust and the Beck Home. So that's not on here right now, but we're hoping to have that all situated so that we can get going on that.
Okay.
And we'll probably have a couple more things.
And the tree?
There, we're getting an alternate bid on the tree.
Okay.
But that's actually generally something that somebody else does. It's not the.
All right.
Okay, with that, we will go back to what we didn't finish in our, in our, in our work session and we'll cherry down there. Have you got anything from the library to share with us this evening?
This isn't library, but just the, the Pleasant Grove Historical Preservation Commission is trying to gather stories from the women's suffrage movement because February is honoring that movement. And so if anybody has stories in their family history or anywhere else that they can share, they're going to compile the stories and put them into a booklet.
Oh, wonderful.
So look in your family histories and see if they're, if you've got anything. Thanks.
Better days twenty twenty.
Councilmember Wilkins, you know, we, I mean, Director, we, we've given you a lot of time this evening, but we could give you more. So what have you got for us?
I don't got much more. I just wanted to report that we successfully hosted the Save Ferris dance for the high school over the weekend. It was like fifteen hundred kids at our rec center. It was insane, but we made it, so. It was a really good event and we were glad to help them out. They just don't have that kind of room. They invite all the other schools to participate and it's a charity event and we were able to host it for them and it ran really well.
Director Giles?
I have a list of about twenty things.
It's about time.
This is just about like what Eric comes up with.
Dionne, you're my new hero. Thank you.
No, working with Marty on getting things ready for the retreat with the Locust property and development there and then also the cemetery. Lots of snow removal and I can get Christmas lights down in between the breaks, so.
You know, I'd like to thank you again for, it was, I've had more people talk to me about how they've enjoyed our downtown park.
It's turned out awesome.
And they're just, they're just happy with, and they says, wow, you guys did well. And I says, hey, it wasn't me. It was a whole team of people.
You helped.
It's been amazing. They've been out there in the snow and the rain and just, and the fox, yeah.
That fox.
It's crazy.
Crazy like a fox.
It's awesome. Thank you for supporting it.
So, well, look forward to next Christmas. So then another Charlie Brown tree lighting ceremony. Chief Thomas?
I just want to thank you for your support during our kickoff dinner a week or so ago. It was great to have you all there. It was a good event. Just another thing, I don't know if you know this or not, but the, the city departments get together on occasion and have lunch together. And we had the most wonderful set of gals come visit with us the other day from the library. We had lunch. It was really a lot of fun to get to know them and stuff, but.
It was kind of funny because for some reason, all of the library people and the one, and your female receptionist, for some reason, all sat on one side and the men were all on the other side. It felt like.
The men and Sarah.
Felt like a junior high dance.
Cute.
Well, Sarah wasn't there.
Okay.
Well, we're a shy bunch. That's all I could say.
Would you like, would you like to do a shout out to your officers or your fire guys of the, the year? Would you like to shout those out?
It was nice.
Would, do you want to make mention of their names?
I don't have all their names. I.
He's still working on.
Okay, no, he, he, he shared them at the thing. They got awards. So Sarah got the.
At the banquet.
Jumpy Jake was the fireman of the year.
Firefighter of the year, yeah.
Firefighter of the year.
You had a part-time and a full-time win.
And the part-time was Shad Hatfield. And I can't remember what the other one was.
There was a lot of them there.
Yes.
I haven't even given them all out yet. A lot of them weren't there that night for some reason.
I know. And you had to be present to win.
And Chief? If, even for the past three years, I have not been in town to attend your thing and even previously because I was always invited because of my emeritus status with the fire department. And it's just a bad time, the first of January, but one of these times I'll.
This next year, I'm going to fix that.
We did, we didn't feel sorry for you that you weren't there.
I bet you didn't, you know, I, I usually don't pass up a mill, okay?
There was an emeritus guy, well, first of all, Hilton, what, I'm trying to remember his name, Glade. But there was a, there was another firefighter emeritus that was there. Does anybody remember the oldest one that we had there? Do you remember what his name was?
Wasn't that Glade?
No, it wasn't Glade.
Did Smokey make it down?
No, no, no.
Is he still alive?
Yes. I saw him out walking the other day with somebody.
Okay, well, thank you for doing that, but I've, we'll work on it for next year. Okay, Captain Smith?
Well, I'd just like to rub it into the fire chief that the mayor comes to ours every year, so anyway. We had our, we were able to attend the Save Ferris dance and Officer Breton didn't have to shut it down. So that's, that's kind of a, a big deal on PG lately, so anyway.
Really?
Yeah, they were very well behaved, so that was good.
Okay, Daniel on the southern side, we've heard a lot from you this time, but what else have you got for us? How's, how's that iceberg coming?
I'll let you guys.
They got something going on.
You, you'll be the first on the line when they open, man. I'll make sure that happens. I'm gonna, I'm gonna do number eleven of my list right here and say thank you to someone who has helped in your life. I'll say thank to all of you guys. I always feel super welcome and supported by all of you. See, I started early on my list.
February.
Yeah. Tomorrow, Community Development is meeting with Public Works. We're doing this program that has got started. We have lunch, like interdepartment lunch, so it's going to be great because we work a lot with community, with Public Works, but we don't know them all by names, by faces, and tomorrow we're going to see it and we're going to break bread and it's going to be a good experience, so we'll do that tomorrow. And I think I'm looking forward, Community Development is looking forward to have lunches with all of you guys. I think it's a good, a good experience for the, for the morality of the employees. And we're going to move soon, Community Development is going, is going to be Eric's neighbor soon. So we're going to start moving on the twenty-eighth, not the whole, we're going to start moving the boxes and a couple of furniture and stuff like that, but at the end of that week, we hope to be operating on the new place. And that's, that's something that Community Development, everyone in my staff is grateful for. We're going to have a good place to work with. I mean, the, the furniture is great, the place is, the light, the, the work that's been done for us and we're very appreciative of it. So thank you very much, guys.
Thank you, Daniel. Marty?
A million things going on right now, but I guess the only thing, we're, just so you know about the pond, we are starting to deliver rock probably tomorrow. As you noticed, all the rocks have kind of sloughed down off that top edge over the years and so we're trying to get all that remedied. We've been digging it out today and we'll be starting to deliver the rock and trying to get that back up and operational soon. So just kind of be aware, that's where we're at with that. And then again, there's a million projects, a million things going on down there, trying to move forward for this next construction season and we're excited to be part of all that, so.
Where does, where's that rock come from?
We're getting it from Nephi Sandstone. I think it's Utah Landscape Rock now. It's out of Nephi is where we got it from, so.
Probably some collusion going on there with the Nephi.
It was a little difficult. I mean, we had to get bids and some of the bids came back with kind of a colored, they had a little pink hue to them and things like that, and we're like, okay, we can't mix gray rock with a pink hue'd rock and.
Oh, yes, you can.
It wouldn't have looked right. So anyway, so we, we think we found the right source and we're hoping that when they deliver it, it's all gray and looks like the rest of the pond, so. But it should be nice when we get that all done and put back together, so.
Well, I signed the PO for it, so we're, we're good to go.
Appreciate that.
So Denise is still trying to find the money for it, so anyway, so.
I think we know where it's coming from, so.
Well, they have some nice rock down there, that's for sure. So anyway, Christine.
I got my new prosecutor last Monday, so that's good. He's jumped in with both feet and we're just trying to get settled and used to each other. And we've had a meeting today with the court to discuss some process issues and I think we're making some progress.
Who is that?
His name is Josh Bishop. He was prosecuting for Saratoga Springs. He has about a year's worth of experience actually prosecuting. But he was a law clerk, they left for a couple of years, so you might remember him from that.
I, I know him.
So in the new space, his office will be?
His office will remain in the old space and he will probably be taking my office. He's particularly excited about the color scheme and the upholstery chairs.
The wallpaper?
Yes.
Wait. That is so funny.
Do you have anything else for us, Scott?
Yeah, just a couple of calendar items. So tomorrow is our oral arguments regarding the Transportation Utility Fund at ten thirty in Spanish Fork. in Spanish Fork. I believe I've sent you an appointment that has the address on there, but there'll probably be a group of us leaving here at nine thirty, so if you wanna ride with us, some of the people here, you can, if you just wanna meet us there, that's great, for those that can make it. Like Daniel was saying, next week will be when the furniture comes for our new space over there, our new old space. He mentioned the lights. I don't know if you've had a chance to walk through there, but we redid all the lights in there.
Yes, it's amazing.
When the PD was in there, it was just those lights were old and not doing, it was kinda dark and part of it was where dispatch was, they kinda needed it a little bit dark. It, it's a world of difference over there and, and it's wonderful. So, our priority is getting Community Development in next week because they are renting a facility and we need to have them out by, by Friday. So, we'll get that done and the, most of the admin offices will be done as well next week. There's a couple that still might be, we might be waiting on, but once we can get the admin offices moved over, then they'll start on the old, the regular part of our city hall, which is new carpet and paint and they're gonna redo the front there a little bit and a, some new furniture for some of the staff up there up front, so. And that will take another month or two for that to happen, but it's been a good project in the sense that Big D's done a good job overseeing it and, and it's not the biggest project and so they're scrambling sometimes to get their, their subs in there, but they've, they've handled it pretty well, so we're just excited to get functional in that way. The basement of the old police department, we're gonna have some room down there. We're working on getting that cleaned out and, but we'll have some storage space, which is nice, and then some future office space if we increase any sort of staff, whether it's administrative or community development. So, that's gonna be a good project for us. Just a reminder, February seventh is when we're having our budget and planning meeting. We're looking to start at eight thirty and as I was looking at kind of our draft agenda, probably be done by three, three thirty, hopefully. I'll send that draft agenda out to you early next week for you to take a look at and see if there's things you wanna add or, or change or, or whatever as far as that's concerned. So, we're still working on a venue. We've had a couple places in mind and we just haven't been able to get something that makes sense for us. Okay, so if you do have suggestions, let us know and, and I can chase it and get that done. And then also a reminder that Wednesday, February twelfth at noon is our big awards ceremony, our inaugural awards ceremony, our first one hopefully of many that we're gonna do. We had, I don't know, I don't want to steal Kyler's thunder. He'll let us know how many nominations. It was a wonderful response from our employees and the hard part now is gonna be awarding four or five employees when we had just a ton of nominations, so.
That is so wonderful.
But we'd love to have you there for that. We will be closing down city hall, well, we'll be closing down our operations. During that, we wanna make sure every employee has an opportunity to come and attend, so that's our intent as we move forward.
Can we fit everybody in the rec center?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, we might have to, I mean, the fire department, we haven't really chatted with them just yet.
Fifteen hundred eyes look good.
Yeah.
That's true.
But we're gonna sit down and we're gonna have a lunch and we need seating for everybody, but we have an ability to accommodate all that.
Okay.
It'll be a good, a good program.
Well, I could just see Tyler putting us in the back room.
So, that's it.
Yeah, the Community Development this addition has come along real well. I'm really pleased with how it is. I almost think the PD wants to move back in over there. It's not a dark and dreary place anymore over there, but I think you're fine where you're at, so it's, it's okay.
And along those lines, once we get everybody moved in, we'll set up a little time you can walk through. I mean, you can go to, go through anytime you want, but to have a little bit of a guided tour, we can set that up and do that.
Yeah, I love that idea.
It, it won't take long to tour it, it's not that much space.
We can turn it into something longer.
Yeah.
We know how to do that.
Denise?
Caffer should be out on the website and so, and then I just sent the updated fee schedule, so it should be out there in the next day or so.
Okay.
So, just doing lots of budget stuff, so, time of year, so.
And we'll give you a few minutes, Kyler.
I will take every bit of those few minutes. We had sixty-nine nominations for awards that employees will be, our employee committee will be reviewing, so innovation, leadership, et cetera. And then we had twenty-five nominations for our team member of the year, which I'll be sending out tonight. And so, you as council will be able to review those and I'll send it, I'll send a PDF for you and a Google Doc, so if you just choose based on that Google Doc, your top five, we'll be able to, hopefully if you can do that before Monday, next Monday, then we'll be able to order that plaque and award for the twelfth meeting.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Okay, thank you. Eric?
I have nothing.
You don't have your, that's right, you told me you didn't have a list tonight.
My list is on the yellow sheet and it's pretty good.
Counselmember Anderson?
I do have something. This morning, I know Public Works had a conversation about, like some of the catastrophes that are just, we're just hearing about all over the world and something that has really become much more commonplace, although I don't know how commonplace, but we just are hearing about it, is active shooters. And I have always had that fear here for us, sitting in meetings. I love where you guys are positioned. I know that you can see things, but we've never actually kinda just walked through like a what-if and sometime I would love that. But I also think that, and Scott, I think this is kind of in your bailiwick, I would actually love that for each of the departments, especially as we have new places where people are situated. They're new. Where do you run? Where do you go? And so, just keep that in mind. I would just love to have an active shooter training and maybe even a drill to know what to do. And shout out to the Plow Boys, they have done a, a great job. I leave in the morning and there's snow and I, you know, the intersections are salted and it's just, it's been very nice, so always a big shout out. I know they're out early.
I don't have anything.
Scott, if we could get with, and maybe this is the department heads, I went to a historical commission thank you party, what do you call it, meeting? And I would love to have each of the, our volunteer commissions come in and give a report from twenty nineteen and then maybe a follow-up halfway through the year. I just want to make sure they know that we recognize and appreciate their efforts as volunteers, but then also that we're on the same page with their efforts, what we can do to support them and just make sure that we're, you know, kinda like Tyler did his report and Mike Roberts, hear from them and see what their needs are for this year.
That's great.
And get them in front of the council.
Yeah, we'll put them on some work sessions coming.
Thank you. Thanks.
Good idea, Sid.
Kathy, anything for us, Donna?
I sure do. Yeah.
Really?
What?
Whoa.
Took over Dionne's list.
Oh, okay.
Please sign the plaits.
That's it.
And the cards.
Okay.
That's the best I can do.
I sure do, Sid, with the biggest smiley face.
Okay, I'm moving you back.
Well, that's all we have. That's back to me. I appreciate all of you. I'm sorry I missed a couple of weeks ago, but hey, we'll have that a few times and I'm, congratulations for bringing pro ten.
You bet. I got to vote twice while you were gone on one item.
You did, that's a, boy, that's a rarity.
I know.
And we're not gonna forget about that either.
When I was listening in, I thought the vote was gonna go the other way, so anyway, but anyway. So, just so you could be on both sides of it, so anyway, but anyway, and we welcome Councilmember Bullock.